Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you? Good. So I'm so glad that you're here this evening. I've spent hours cooking over here. No, I'm kidding. Complete thank you to our friends from Aramark and team that are in the back there. Thank you. We give them a round of applause for preparing this meal and providing us space and time. And to the operations team in general who always do a great job in setting us up. So thank you, Mr. Hawks, as well. We really appreciate you. With that said, you know, Thanksgiving has that like really special place, I'm sure, in many of our hearts, right? It's a time for eating and enjoying each other. It's also the time, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, to have good conversation. And conversation around things that you may not normally talk about on a given day, things that you probably would like to talk about, but you just don't have the time. So, you know, sometimes food invites that conversation. And hopefully, the turkey won't put you asleep, but more importantly, allow you to engage in some really good conversation around a few different things. And in this style today, it won't be anything tremendously formal. It'll be informal, small-table conversations, and we'll bubble up ideas. But as promised, I always want to provide you a couple of updates before we go too much further. One of which, you'll see in the center of the table, we'll get to a couple of things. I've been talking about for a while, the big board or the leadership board, where we'll share data points and talk about how our schools are performing. And with that said, we're going to have that opportunity to look at those numbers and see what those numbers mean by "school" in a few minutes. And you'll have some questions and time to talk, as a table, to talk about these things. Two, just some general updates around where we are at this point in the school year. So believe it or not, in November going into December, we begin to start to think about next year, next school year. So our planning process begins in the next few weeks, few months, and we want to hear from you. So my first question in a minute, I know you're catching a bite or two, will be to think about, what are the things we should start to think about to get better as we go into the 1920 school year? Because we want your input, need your input to really think about the things that are important. Thirdly, in a, is it the 28th, Ellen, or ADC meeting? The 28th. November 28th, we have Academic Distress Commission meeting, where we'll have a more detailed conversation around our operational, managerial, and instructional progress that has been made. But again, I wanted to save that for after Thanksgiving, after you all bring in some sweet potato pie for me to eat next week. But then also, at a time where we can actually look at some really significant numbers. The other piece, though, that I, before we even go into that meeting, there have been some questions that I have. We'll have some more data next week as we talk about some of those financial things. But Mr. Hill, who could not be here tonight, has provided us a five-year update and forecast of where we are financially, and we're in pretty good standings. For the next few years, we're in really, really solid shape, partially because we just spent a lot more time funneling the money where it needs to go. But two, realizing that we have to get a place, just being a little bit smarter with our money over time. So we spent some time thinking about that. So know that financially, we're doing pretty well. And then lastly, of course, as we go through and have more conversations and as we look at the numbers, I want you to help us look at and tell us what you see when you see numbers like this. So having some dialogue around that. So let me orient you to what you see in this document before you dive in. So hopefully, thank you very much. Hopefully, you have in front of you just a staple copy, has two pages to it, one of which is a little shorter than the other. The top sheet is for the high schools specifically. So that top sheet just relates information around the high schools. And the longer sheet gives you information about all of our elementary schools. And you're probably looking like, wow, there's a lot of numbers. I don't know what all these pieces mean. But in short, what these numbers indicate are things that we look to our school leaders and our school leadership teams to help drive what happens day-to-day at school, right? So these indicators help us identify, hey, how are we doing? If we're doing well, great, let's celebrate it. If we need to get better, where is it that we need to get better? So on the left-hand side, you'll see the areas that we focus on, the big board benchmark column you see there. Those are the areas at the high school level we focus on. And then again, at the elementary level, what we focus on. And then you'll see, next to that, the key performance indicator, the KPI. And all that really means is a fancy way of saying, what are the little things at school that we look at or look for from our school leaders? What are the little things that we coach and support our leaders on to be successful? And then, next to that, you'll see 4-3-2-1, columns that have a 4-3-2-1 in blue, green, yellow, and red. And those are the high bar marks. So those are not their actual marks right there in that, under those four columns. It tells you, if you're doing really well, that's how you land at a blue four or a green three, so on and so forth. But as you move over, you start to see the colors change, correct? You start to see more things in color. Those numbers indicate actual results for schools right now. So ideally, if you were a school, what color do you want to see? Whole bunch of blue, right? Your new favorite color is blue, right? On the other side of things, what color don't you want to see? Red. Red. So those are the numbers that are indicated there. And obviously, blue and green are really good. But I also, I mean, the reason why we're bringing this out now in November is that we have a whole rest of the year to see that progress. So seeing a lot of numbers that may, and colors that may not represent what we want to see right now is okay, because we have growth. We have time to grow. But at the same time, why and where do we need to grow? So that's where the conversation will be today. So I want to give you just a few minutes to digest some of these numbers, see what you see, and then at your table, have a brief conversation around it. So just take a few minutes to just ask yourself some questions as you look at these numbers, and then I'll answer a few questions, then we'll jump into dialogue, all right? So take two or three minutes, look at these numbers, see what you see, and then we'll kind of go from there, okay? Any questions right now? Okay, great. All right. So I know you're eating and digging into a few things, but curious if there was anything that you were like, huh, what does this number mean? Or what jumps out to you about a school that you see? Anything that jumps out?
One question I have is, so these, the scorecard, is there a comparison to like last year, that they made improvements? Or is this like our baseline first year, where it's starting to track a lot of this stuff?
Great question. We do, we have individual numbers on some of these areas, but nothing done in a collective form. So this is our first year, first run at this. But great question. Yes. NR is, means it's not rated, is that right?
Yeah, there was nothing captured in there.
Got it. So in the, in, thank you. So in those situations where you might see, great question, you might see NR under a Francosento and then Toni Morrison for an area next to standard-aligned lessons in classrooms. It's just that it wasn't, wasn't captured. Other questions? If no questions, I want to ask a few of you all. What is one data point that you see in there that is really positive? Something that you're like, wow, that is really good, and you know, we should celebrate at a school. What do you see?
Well, seniors that are going to graduate this year, and it looks like the 12th grade, percent of failure rate, we've got a green.
Yes.
That must be okay.
That is great. Exactly. Right. Scholars that are on track, especially our seniors, on track for graduation. That's huge. Thank you for pointing that out. Yes. And I think you have a senior or two graduating, right?
I have two that are graduating at the end of the year.
That's awesome. That is awesome. Yes, sorry. The behavior, where? Where specifically? Yeah. 10th grade overall, you'll see that the, the actual suspensions there are really low. They're not too bad for our high school 10th elevens grade. What else? What about on the elementary side? What are some positives on the elementary side? Not that there are elementary school leaders in here that could help out with this question, but how about some positives on the elementary side? I heard it. Behavior, right? Behavior overall. So if we look across the board at our elementary schools, see the line there, number of scholars suspended or loss of instructional opportunity, and just go across that whole row, what color is mostly dominating? Blue. Lot of blue, a lot of green, right? Really, really strong. What else? Beginning of school year to now. Yeah. So that, so going to the, and we're going to get to that side of things, going to attendance, I think there's some, some positives, and we'll go to some areas where we have some concerns. But on the positive side, who has the, the highest percent of scholars in schools every single day? What school do you see? Helen Steiner Rice. Who else is up there? Toni Morrison. And who else? Palm. And Dehaanis, right? Is anyone here from Dehaanis by any? Oh! There she is. There is. But nonetheless, in all seriousness, there's some really positive things that are going on. And Marie, not to put you on the spot, I know you're about to take a bite of that apple pie. What are some things that you're doing to get that positivity in getting the schools, getting kids to school every single day?
We announce our attendance every day in the morning announcements. We have what we did for the last week's attendance by grade level. We had a grade level trophy, so we just had one at home, and we wanted to be a team after like grade.
That's awesome. That's awesome. That is awesome. That is awesome to see. Hello. How are you? Thank you for coming.
And she has 100% that she feeds the kids. We've got a few days of breakfast and lunch.
100% breakfast and lunch on select days. That is amazing. That's good. That's good. That is awesome. Awesome, awesome news. Any, any other positives that you pull out here?
It seems like there's a, overall, with all this food, elementary schools, there's a low percentage of students being suspended, so they're not out of school.
Right. Low number of suspensions in elementary, and they're in school learning, right? That's, that's what we really, we want, right? So doing the right thing in school, making sure they're staying in school and getting a great education. Thank you for pointing that out. Absolutely. How about on the other side of things? What are some things that you see in here that we could do a little bit better? You have something, or you want to give me a high five? Is that it? Okay. I'll take the high five. I want to go here, and then I'll go right back there. Yes.
I think it might have been in the high school attendance. I think some things that can help is, if someone misses their bus pass, a lot of times the bus driver do know, know who the student is. I don't think that the bus driver should tell them, you know, I can't let you on the bus because you missed, you forgot your bus pass.
So it sounds like it may be even a cause and effect there, right? So attendance might be low, we might have to think about how those kids that want to go to school need to get on the bus. I know that, I know transportation overall tries to make that extra loop and make sure that they're grabbing as many kids. So if there are instances like that, I would love, and I know Mr. Hawks would love to hear more about that for sure.
I have heard of kids not being able to get on the bus because of that. And I know that they have a chance to get a whole bus pass. You know, in the rain, a lot of families don't have that.
So I, I think that's a great point. I know Mr. Hawks will speak with, you know, if you have more information on that, so we can fix that. Because we want our kids in school. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
I was just noticing that there's no data about the percentage of scholars in dress code. Can I ask why?
Yeah, because that metric was new, brand-new, and the system that had to funnel it through was not up yet. That's the only reason why. Other questions or things that pop up? Great. For those that just arrived, please grab some food. I'm sorry.
Back to the bus. I have had parents call me where their student is walking to the bus. I guess they want them right there on the corner, but the bus driver need one because they're not right there, but they're on the way to the bus.
Got it. Got it. Got it. You know, it was interesting. There's two things. I had a great conversation, because this very conversation around transportation came up in our attendance roundtable. So we have a group of partners that meet with us. What is that, Mrs. Prass? Is it every other month? It's every few weeks? In which they meet with us to talk about this. And this very conversation around transportation and both issues came up as conversation. And Ms. Ford did a great job, you know, she took a ton of notes, tried to figure out what the solutions could be. One of the things she mentioned, which we're exploring, there's actually an app that will allow our families and kids to actually track where their bus is. So instead of, right, I mean, I thought that was a great, a great piece. So now, to that point, if I know my bus is a block away and I can see it, I can get outside, especially when it's cold, when you want to be inside and need to be inside. So we're working that piece out to hopefully fix that very problem. So thank you for bringing that up. But that's one thing she pointed out pretty clearly.
Do they wait a few seconds for the, um, the stop, if there's like nobody there? Do they kind of wait to see if anybody's going to show up? You know, there's sometimes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, they wait. They wait. The question is, you know, do, does the bus wait? If they're, if they're anticipating kids, if they don't see anyone, they do wait up to five minutes to see if anyone is actually coming. Yep. Yes. Yeah, so both. So the question is around ACT scores, and is it offered to kids, and so on and so forth. So actually, for all of our juniors and seniors, it is becoming a mandatory piece, obviously. So we're looking to find ways to offer it to our kids younger. And we also have kids who are taking as early as eighth grade. So we had a couple of kids a few weeks ago, just honored for their scores 21 above, who are still in middle school. So that's something we're pushing and looking to find more opportunities to do. Mrs. Ariah, how are you?
I'm sorry I was late. There's conferences going on and.
You're fine. I'm glad you're here.
Mike, go to Animal King, they're not on here.
Animal King. Why is? Oh. Yeah, that's strange. It must have been hidden, and we can rerun it so that we can see it, because I would like to see Admiral King as well. Thank you for catching that. I don't know what happened. I'll find that out. Anyone else? Great. So there's three questions in the center of each table to help just have a little bit of a conversation. And you'll see it there, has two cornucopias on your page, one of which is, when you think about the Rain City Schools, what are you the most thankful for this school year? The second thing is, how to, how can we continue to get better together? And the third surrounds, when you look at this big board, what questions does this still raise for you? Because now you have a few people at your table that you could ask a few more questions. So as you eat, take five or 10 minutes, answer those questions, and then we'll have a whole group conversation about it, and then we'll go on our merry way. Maybe even a plate to go home with, all right? So take five minutes or so, answer those questions, and have a conversation. All right. So why don't we, why don't we come back together for a few minutes? Had a chance to pop into most tables and heard really good conversation around a few things. Given that, what we're thankful for, I would like to save to the end, because I think that's a great way to leave us as we go into the holidays together. So we'll save that one for last. But why don't we start with other additional questions or questions that were raised based on the numbers you saw in the conversation you had? What other questions kind of bubbled up? And I don't mean to have my back to you, but yes, please go ahead. Did you have something you wanted to raise?
I kind of said it earlier about the personal standards between stimulating teachers. Though I know that a lot of the students aren't going to get their attention wise at home or stipulation, so they'll look towards teachers to give that to them. What a lot of our parents do see most of the time is they're still not being stimulated the way they should be, because the teachers are refusing to actually sit down and work with them one-on-one. How do we present that in a more positive manner?
I appreciate you raising that. And also, there's, you know, obviously, we have some folks just jotting a few notes down, and I will grab that note in a second. But I think you raised a good point of, around our scholar engagement, like how, how can we increase scholar engagement? Because that's, that's a big piece, especially as you go into the winter months. You think about, and we kind of had this around weather, but at the same time, you know, kids are going to wake up a lot earlier in the morning to go to school if they feel like on the other end, there's something to get really excited about, right? So what are those things that we can create to make them even more excited about school? So I appreciate you raising that point. Other things? Weather. Please say more.
Well, weather, it just, I feel like, like the freezing really bad and stuff, I feel like it's wet, you know? And outside, and you go to school, you're going to end up getting sick because you're all wet in that school. And you can't even hold it or nothing. So that, who knows how much school you're going to get, because you're sick. And then if I couldn't go sick, then listen, they're going to get sick, and then when he's done, you're just getting resick.
So thinking about, because this is the time of year, right, when weather changes, and it just is a little bit more challenging for all of us, how do we help our kids get to school safely and dry and warm and all of those things, too? So I know, again, as I mentioned, the operations team and I have been in conversations around these pieces. We're hoping to do something, hopefully, just, you know, start to move that down the road of doing something a little bit different to help those families, one of which, again, is that app that we're hoping to make sure is ready to go for families and make sure we get that information out. But then two, some other creative ways, I think that roundtable has thought of some ideas around maybe potentially having spaces for kids to stand under to stay, be warm, things of that nature. But it's a great point.
Sometimes I don't know if it's the same bus from like, some school goes to Longfellow, so I'm not sure if it's the same bus from that school or whatever, but it goes right past my house. I'm like, well, if that's one of the Longfellow buses, but I didn't grab that one.
Right. Right. And what's interesting, and not to, not, Mr. Hawks, not to put you on the spot, how many different routes do we have running through the city? I'm going to say, a lot.
And it, just for your instance, a lot of people don't realize that you may see a bus go past your house, but that doesn't necessarily mean that bus is going to your school. There's a lot of times we have some special needs students that we may have to pick up in your area, but they are being, you know, taken across town to another school or thing. And for charter schools, we are obligated to pick, to transport to charter schools. So it may be picking up a scholar at, you know, charter school. Yeah, we do have quite a fleet of buses that's going around in there.
Yeah. Ooh, sorry. Yes.
How do we justify putting little kids on a big kid's bus?
How do we justify putting little kids on a big kid's bus?
I see it every morning, at one point.
Hmm.
And I can answer that for you. And actually, if you look at the motor transportation records, your child is more safe on the bus than they are on a horse on a vehicle, because of, one, the size, and two, we're getting them transported to the school without, you know, without parking, or, you know, it should be, it's a lot safer, we went down, that your child gets out of bus, by the way.
Me, I would bet, drive my kid to school, because the way that so many kids behave here, and fair on the news, kids, little kids, getting beat up by different kids on the bus.
Well, most of the time, almost 10% of the time, little kids are with little kids on the bus. Year highs are on the high bus, and high school heads are on the bus. And a lot of times, some of our schools are all typically tied, so, yeah, they're with their own age groups, you know, pre-teen, high school, kindergarten, middle, grade, and junior high, just junior high.
When you, you were saying that you've seen that, is that, are you just saying in general, like you've seen it on?
In general, when I go to drop scum, I come in through the back.
Okay.
Okay. The back door there, I sit there, the doors, I see kids waiting out there, there's little kids standing out there, anything like this, and they're all being out.
I see. So they're all from the elementary school?
I have no idea.
Okay. If they're coming out of that building, they're all coming out.
No, no, I mean, early in the morning, at 7:30.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I thought you meant at Lark. Okay. Okay. Okay.
I mean, it's at Lark, or, but in the back of Lark, where they pick up the kids.
I see.
And little kids are getting on the bus with the big kids.
Gotcha.
And then the bus is going on.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. I think it's a valid point for us to, to look at and see, like, who is getting on that bus, right? To your point, safety, little kids, big kids. And then two, I think, I think the operations team does a tremendous job of actually tracking incidents that happen on those buses, because usually we have attendants or assistants that are on the bus to make sure kids are safe. I'm sure you probably see those books, too. I'm sorry. And with cameras on the bus as well, so.
GPS monitor and, and monitor.
And monitors. Right. Right. So there, there's a ton of ways we get that information. The good news is, for, in large part, I usually don't hear or get many of those situations that come up on the bus. So I think there are preventative things, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't look into it further. I think you're right. You're absolutely right. Yes, Mrs. Ariah?
I guess I have a question, going back to the report card. I don't know if we had touched that, but my seventh grader, for example, looking at the standards, I don't have it with me, but like for social studies, there's 20-some standards. She has one grade. From how I was understanding is, by the end of the year, they should have a number grade in every single box. So in nine weeks, they did one, and I believe there was 21 total. So they're supposed to do 20 standards then in the other three weeks. Correct? Am I right? And that was in everything? That was not in just one class? That was in all the classes?
I think, I think you raised a great question. I think that, I don't know that individual teacher, but I think it is a conversation, because I may even go back to Mom's point up here around engagement with teachers and kids, of, you know, how do we ensure that our kids are getting what they need? And ensuring that they're engaged all the time? And when you see a result where it looks like they're only engaged in one standard, that probably raises questions, and I think that's fair.
Well, I mean, it was at conferences. And I mean, they showed us the work they're doing and whatnot, but I just, from how I understood was, that doing standard-based grading, it was going to be better, because how it was going to be broke up is, they were going to learn everything they're supposed to learn. So if they're only learning one, two standards a quarter, they're not going to make them all by the end of the year.
I think you're absolutely right.
So that means that my seventh grader, going into eighth grade, isn't going to have learned everything she needs to learn, right? And it, well, like I said, it wasn't just in social studies, it was in all her classes that she didn't, I feel like she should have learned a quarter, right?
Sure. Sure.
I mean, I guess I could go back to my girls at Animal King. They learned a quarter of their standards.
Sure. So I think, I think the other question, sorry to cut you off, the other question that may be raised is, not every standard is created equal, right? So some standards are bigger, have more pieces, and are weighted more heavily. So a teacher may, you know, dive into a standard that may take four or five weeks, depending on where kids are, where another standard may be a day. Or another situation, as the year goes on, they might be teaching from three different standards in one day, and kids could be mastering three different standards. So it's, it's hard to break up the mastery of 20 standards where you do five each quarter, because each standard may not be equivalent to the same amount, and therefore, you may[1618.32] because each standard may not be equivalent to the same amount, and therefore you may not do five per quarter. Does that make sense? And I know there's some school principals in here, maybe you can, can you speak to that a little bit, maybe?
I just brought up the standards on there, I'll say. Some are, we can have all your homes. So we lack a lot of focus, and others are, even with the social studies, they're cross-curricular, and then the math standards are a little bit different. I would love to share this app with you and sit with you and show you a couple of things that we do do.
I guess I just don't understand is, I was told that, yes, they should have a number in every single box. Like, they were, that's what I was told from numerous people. I sat in the focus group, I was told that there would be a number. When I spoke with the dean at General Johnny, that there should be a number in every box by the end of the year. That's what I was told, Mr. Bishop told me that, Mr. Partey told me that. Even if it's cross-curricular, I mean, I've done the apps, I have everything.
By the end of the year, I see.
But I see the date. Even if I understand that some are, some are gonna be able to teach, because she showed me. The first, the one I understand is a ton was in that first one, she showed me everything I did. I just don't understand how they're gonna be able to get twenty more standards into those three quarters. So my question is, going into then eighth grade, she's going to have standards that were not taught to her.
Right. Hence the reason.
Going into a test she's taking, she's gonna have standards that weren't taught to her. And that was just my question is, I'm seeing that now.
Which kind of goes, kind of goes to this parent's point. Yeah, kind of goes to her point as well. Which I, I think that's the big reason why we moved to standard-based grading, because it, it creates an environment where we actually have to look at deeply what our kids are mastering or not. And if we don't, if, as a parent, you're saying, wow, this standard wasn't taught, or my kids weren't engaged, I need to hold the school accountable for that, right? I need to make sure that my teacher's doing their job, they're, like, everyone in the system is doing their job. In the years past, where you just got an A or a B, you would never known that. So I actually really appreciate your question, because now you're pointing out something like, wow, it's interesting. In years past, I got a grade, I didn't know what was really going into that grade. Now you're seeing what's going into that grade, and in this case, what's not. So I think you're raising the right point, hence why the shift. So in, long story short, it's gonna take time for our teachers to get and build that muscle. But we also realize, that doesn't mean we can't hold them accountable for making sure your kids get.
I'm not saying that the teachers aren't being, you're making it sound like I'm saying that the teachers aren't teaching correctly. Like, I'm not saying that the teachers are wrong, and if they're, you're not, they're not being held accountable. I'm not saying that at all.
Okay, okay.
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, they, I just want to know, is at the end of the year, if she doesn't have checkmarks in those boxes, that means that that was not taught to her.
And that, and that goes back to my point around.
But I see, that's, yes, that's true. Yes, that is.
Well, and that's where we can't, we can't predict that yet.
And I guess my other question then, do the teachers then have the training for this before school started? To teach them this way, right? Because I mean, I've taught, I mean, I was told that they did, but I've talked to many teachers that have said they didn't get the training until after the school year started.
Right.
So is that why the first quarter, maybe, we have less standards being taught?
So it's interesting, standards have been around for years, right? And so, so I think in general, the hope and understanding, given the, the experience and wealth of knowledge our teachers have, they understand the standards. And I think this is just actually highlighting, hey, here are the standards you need to address that you, as a teacher, already know. And so I actually think you're raising a good point. Why aren't teachers teaching the standards? Why aren't they, you know, making sure that a report card is filled with master, or at least indicators that standards are being taught? Because I think it raises a question, do we have all of our teachers understanding the standards? Do they understand the material that needs to be broken down? And I think this process is bringing that up to the surface so we can better support our teachers, and better yet, highlight, you know what, we have some work to do. And I think that's the purpose of these report cards. But I want to bring other voices into the conversation as well. Miss Nancy.
Are you gonna have any kind of training, if not training, something for the parents? Because I've been hearing about such standards, they, oh my gosh, about that.
Yeah.
They say, the parents say they don't understand, they are so totally confused about the stuff. Then you hear people say, that the teachers say, that, you know, you need to get that, and shit. But anyway, you need to, that the parents, because they know stuff. They're worried about when they go to high school, I'm gonna graduate, I didn't have enough credit. So I think, I don't know, maybe you could have a town hall meeting where you explain standard-based grading to the parents that they want to learn, because it's really questioned about, they don't understand, they're totally lost.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true.
I also think it's part of ownership, like for building, for example. I open the conference, so we, we sat with our parents there, and we also get them on the computer to get on Power School and show them. There are cameras that went and went out, so we last month done that, and also getting this one. Today, I think we all think of it as, oh, I could've talked to our parents about it again. So I think, I truly don't, I mean, I think.
No, but I'm just saying, I think, I think sometimes parents are more comfortable going to their home school, is what I'm trying to say, and hearing from the staff, they see everything, they think it's their child, and so that principle or those things, then coming.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I will say, because I go to the school board meeting, and there are parents coming into that school board meeting complaining about, they don't understand, they don't know what's going on, and this is what, you know. They said that the teacher didn't understand it either, okay? And they couldn't explain it to them, and they want to know how many, can you give five comments or four comments? It's like, it's an odd going thing, and so the parents are complaining about it, because they don't understand. If your school didn't do this, that they'd be as a group or a whole school, need to get together and get some kind of, you know, across the board. If your school didn't share with another school, so they can do it, so the parents understand it. But I know as a parent, they don't, they, not just go, they don't understand.
And I think too, when we have a quarter on our seventh school, we discuss how they can honor all the kids. That, that seemed helpful. And we'll take anything.
I, I think the other point that you're raising is a big one, right? And we've had this kind of conversation around, how do we get more parents involved, right? So the parents that are here, we're kind of preaching to the choir. Like, you're gonna raise your hand, you're gonna ask the questions, you're gonna push our, our thinking around this. And unfortunately, we still have, we have a challenge of getting more of our, our parents engaged in that way. So when they do see something new, even though there might have been a robocall, a text message, a focus group, an opportunity for coffee, or other opportunities, they still didn't attend, we still have to find a way to reach them too. So I think the question and the point you're raising is, how do we get to more of our parents? Family, university, we had our first session about a month ago, right? And hoping for more families and parents where there were sessions dedicated directly to that. We, we didn't get the turnout for that. So we had to figure out, how do we get more of our families engaged? So those questions become, oh, I not only know it, but I also know when I can get more information. So I think you're raising a great question, a great point. Sorry, I keep having my back, all the good, so, go ahead. I, I don't know who was first.
Um, I was also learning, um, there are five classes at high school that are only staffed by adults. How are we gonna do this better, because like, I know my daughter has two classes and probably five, I don't know. So as we talk about the standards here, we, you know, have consistent rules.
Yeah, so I, I will, I think you're raising a great point. That has been a pain point for some time. There are certain classes that we can't get the teacher for. We also have a high number of teachers that call out, right? So on average, last year, eighteen point one days of absence per teacher in the district. So almost a month of lost time by teachers, right? And so it's hard for us, if the teacher's out, and we want that teacher there, and they're not showing up, we have to find a sub. And sometimes subs, and to be honest, you know, they're pulled everywhere across this, this area. And so we're not able to get, you know, high-class teachers, they're probably the first, they're probably the first. Well, that's the other thing, where because they're already plugging in one hole, there's other holes. And, and again, I'm not gonna put my school leaders on blast, but I, I don't know how many, on the average day, could you have out, like, on any given day, how many folks could you have out? Right. At the high school, that number triples.
I mean, there are classes that are totally, our teacher doesn't have teacher anymore.
Yeah.
So we have some here, some here, some here. How can she be scheduling agencies in her core class, and split in her other classes, if you pay on the whole, because I don't lie.
There's, there's not a teacher. And that's the, that's the challenge of, when our teachers are out, and we have nine, ten, twelve, fourteen people out, it's hard for us to staff, and not to say that is an excuse, but our challenge is trying to figure out, how do we get more teachers?
But how do you permit a sub to teach, you know? You need to have permanent subs, so that they, they are already ready to go that day.
Right.
Because they are on the staff, and they have.
Right. The challenge is, once you plug in, say, someone that is a permanent sub, you have thirteen other vacancies, right? So that, that's a challenge we're trying to grab for. Yes, ma'am?
That's, that's what I'm saying, saying it was like, uh, substitute for function.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
And the regular bus drivers on there and stuff, you can get more on time.
Correct.
So when there's substitutes, I believe, or else it's not, so they're later.
Yep.
And then I, I was frustrated because I heard, so if I get, if I'm getting his breakfast, I feel like, if he gives breakfast late, it might be rushed, and he's eating fast in the good room.
I agree. And, and both of those situations are real, right? So when there's a teacher out, or there's a bus driver out, it, it creates a different environment in both situations, right? Which I don't think is fair by any stretch of imagination, but it is a challenge we're trying to face. I am curious, from both, both angles, what can we do? What are some possible solutions?
Permanent subs, how many, I think, we still, and then when we're pushing, are there some, like, examples?
We, we have substitutes from Rachel Wixie that are always made available to us.
I think, I think, I guess, my thing is, is there higher subs?
Through Rachel Wixie?
Yeah. They are, they can come in every day.
Every day, well, they can come up to four consecutive days, I think that is, and then on the fifth day.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you had a permanent sub, that they are, they're, they're under a week, they need to be here five days a week, because you're, you're, you're under contact with your, your main schools, at least those people are ready. And when they aren't teaching in a classroom, they could be, to what she was saying earlier, they could be coming over and helping another teacher out here, helping another teacher here.
I agree, I agree, I agree. I think it's a great solution. I, I think the, and we, we went down that road at one point, and we realized. Anyone take a guess how much we spend on substitutes? I promise I won't answer your question. How much we spend a year on substitutes? Well, total, how much we spend as a district? If it was ninety-five dollars, yes, we're gonna get a permanent sub for everyone. Right? So we have about a little over a million-dollar budget just for substitutes. And so if you imagine trying to figure out how to use that million dollars better, and initially we said, you know what? We'll have a permanent sub or two per school. But then we start to see, on average, at a school, there could be two or three people out. So even that one permanent sub can't be in three places at once. And so we're trying to figure out other solutions as well, to figure that piece out. One of the solutions we did present to our teachers at the beginning of this year was the idea of, and, and working with the teachers' union was figuring out, what if we incentivize our teachers being there every day, right? We took that, and they voted on it, and they actually voted it down. So that was one situation where we were trying to get our teachers to be there, and we just couldn't do it. So we're still going back to the drawing board and trying to figure out other ways, but that's just unfortunate, one of the realities. Is that a hand for a question? I really hope you have a question. You do? Go ahead. I'm ready. Can you say the last part again? Oh, that, that was beautiful. So she said, she's thankful for her family, she's thankful for her kid, you should be thankful for your kids. Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you for sharing. Yes. Yes.
All the educators in that first school, they should need behavior charts.
Hmm.
And, and leave, and, and there's some people that need behavior charts, and most of the people don't. Well, teachers, even in a whole class, behavior charts now, which have the class even on the, you know.
Hmm, hmm. Right.
And which, and which, and which, where they have to push their parents at the time, their behavior chart. And they only get, like, if you have two marks on your behavior chart, you get about one ticket.
Okay.
And if you get, like, about three or more, you don't get no ticket.
So how many tickets do you have?
She's best in the whole time.
Well, it sounds like it's a system where you, you get rewarded for good behavior, is that right?
Well, what she's trying to get at, it's the whole class.
You're up to a hundred tickets?
If one person in the class, each class, acts, the whole class is in trouble.
Oh, I see.
That's where the fair process is at, there's.
I see. And it should be, so like, one, if you're doing your job and doing it right, you should be rewarded, not penalized. Got it, got it, okay. Thank you for sharing. And I know, Ms. Prass, she's our chief family officer, she'll look into that and see what's going on there, okay? And, right, 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 yes.
Why she goes, why she goes, why she goes, her daughter, they fix the school late. Technically, that child is allowed, let's say, come in that building for purpose, allowed to have purpose, you cannot stop them, have purpose. I had that issue, she got her purpose.
I know, I know about that, I'm just saying, I don't want them to be there, so we need to hurry up and then.
Oh, yes, she has another thing.
Got it. So he's getting his food, but being rushed.
Yeah.
I see, okay, okay. Duly noted, and I, I know that, that we have ears everywhere. I want to try to go back here to get some more comments back here. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I think having the lunch at the high school, I have five minutes to eat, and my kids can eat for a whole week because she doesn't have time.
Gosh, they're being rushed through, through lunch.
They're being pushed through, and there's no, it's not.
Okay.
So they come home, they're hungry, and then late by dinnertime, they're starving.
Right, okay.
And it's like, you guys are supposed to be taking care of our kids while they're here, but all they get is basically, like, I don't think my kids like to show up, so I can't go to school.
Right, right, right. So it sounds, it sounds like they're going to lunch, but not having enough time to eat it.
But if I get my kids at home, I can tell them, but if your teacher's doing, you better wait.
Right, right. All right. I want to just make sure I capture those three points before we move on. Substitutes, busing, definitely the tracking sheet, and also lunches and breakfasts if they're being rushed. I think those are the big, biggest four things. Did I see another hand back there, though? How are you? Yes.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
So I wanted to, you know, I know you said you want to give your schools, like, creatively weigh this top on their building.
Yes.
And I discussed, I want to ask you, if you're aware of, that Washington Elementary specifically, that's where my third grader goes to, decided that they're only going to acknowledge the children's academic success and attendance, sorry, attendance success twice a year.
Yes.
And I just wondered, were you aware of that, one, and two, if so, do you agree with that?
First, thank you. I am aware now, and, and it's unfortunate that, that has been your experience. Just today, actually, I had a, I checked in with Mr. Bishop, our chief equity and achievement officer, about how we celebrate our kids and our academic deans, I believe, when is the meeting?
So I actually met with two schools today.
Two schools today. And that will be going throughout all of our elementary, middle, and high schools, on the expectations for celebration. And they, you'll, if I could, I'm looking at the sheet in my head, you would see, you know, upwards of a daily, monthly, quarterly, and yearly, like, celebration that's expected. And I think part of it is, celebration may not have been expected to the degree it is, and we assume, like, I, I don't, I think you might have came in a little bit later, but Ms. Deschek, who was just here, was talking about the times, I mean, weekly, in which she's celebrating. So that culture, that expectation is gonna be heightened, because now we're gonna be asking that, she just stepped out. We'll, we'll be asking that of all of our academic deans to kind of drive that initiative. So that's to come, first. But I, your second part of the question, do I think that's acceptable? I think what is acceptable is celebrating our kids as, as many times as we can for the excellence that they are. And I think that should be the narrative that should be in schools every single day, about how great they are. And doing it so that they value it too, right? So I don't, I wouldn't want kids to be celebrated just to be celebrated, but I also think celebration should be enough where they feel good about it, so they can come back and do some more.
Especially when you're talking about kindergarten, the graders, like, they don't remember, you know, four months ago, like, oh, I got an honorable for my first quarter, like, that's kind of.
Right. I, I would even argue even, high school kids still need it too. Right, yeah. Yes. I want to, I'm sorry, your hand came up.
Um, okay, laptops.
Yes.
Okay, but.
You're fine, this is great. This is family dinner, this is how family dinner should be.
So laptops are being taken, and my daughters were taken, taught to school, we've, we've got it to take care of now, but there's gotta be a better way of reporting these, because our teachers, our, our principals, they're, they're overtaxed. And then you add on to material things that are being stolen, they, okay, we're gonna work on that, we're gonna work on those case fighting over here. You know, we gotta take care of the kids fighting over here, not to take care of the laptop and stuff. So in the meantime, two weeks, we're by, and we knew, we couldn't get, anybody to do anything. So finally, the gentleman, the boys and girls club said, I said something to him, and you know, within twenty minutes, I haven't left, shared my cup there. So I think there better need a better way of taking care of that, of the stolen.
What are, what are your suggestions? I'm curious.
Well, I mean, just who, who do you call for all this?
Yep. So at the, at the school site, initially that go, should go to dean and scholar, family engagement, right? So they're the, the point person, and ultimately to the director in this case. And that is the, the direct contact. To the district office, obviously, it's a conversation with folks on our operations team, and we're able to.
I called over there.
Over where?
Over, that's over at your office, actually, probably at least five times.
Okay, to whose office?
To your office.
So that, that conversation, like I mentioned, should go to the operations team, those are the folks.
And they kept saying, I kept going to run around here, run around there, and you know, I, I totally get it. I mean, I'm not complaining, so we gotta go over.
Okay.
Because.
Give me some, some solutions.
Well, I'm trying to say, we have, there should be one place that you need to call. You don't, you don't talk to the office here, and this person goes here, because in between times, someone forgot, because like I said, there's an issue going on here, there's too many issues going on. So you need one, one office that you call, and then there's some people that, you fellas, you need to run and say something.
Yeah, I want to get some clarity for my purpose. You said, now, does she have a laptop, it wasn't broken?
No, it's stolen.
I was a little confused. When you said taken, I thought it was like taken by an administrator, but it was stolen, okay.
No, it's stolen.
At that point, there's just a couple of things that need to be done on your half, just so you, I say it for everybody, so that everybody will know. A police report, as you may, and you, and that scholar will get a new laptop. You know, unless we can find it, those, those have a tracking device in them.
Yeah.
So we'll either try to get them, and/or we will give you a borrowing the next day, until we did that.
Okay, because like, you see what you said, that you're saying, that nobody knew that. So like I was saying, I called, I called your office, I called another office, that they said, oh, you can call this office here, you can call this, and then I also talked to the principal.
Gotcha. So it sounds like maybe even in the materials when we hand out laptops, which I'm curious to see what literature, and I felt like it was captured in what was handed out, detailing like, if this happens, you call, like, you file a police report. If not, we need to fix that. But I think that's probably on the front end, that might be part of the solution of having that for parents, so you're aware who to call directly, so you don't have to go and get that kind of feeling of a runaround.
And that report can be done at the high school, or so please, you know, report that we.
Well, this is, this is that, uh, the middle school. And so, we ran around, ran around, and took her almost three weeks to get her laptop. We're in that group, we don't have a way to study, we don't have, and she's had to borrow someone else's laptop. Well, I said, told her, do not do that again, because then if you something wrong with that laptop, you're gonna get trouble.
We do, and I, before we leave, because I want to.
I'll give you my car.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I also, you know, and this is our chief schools officer here, and chief family officer, maybe we can just know the name of the school too, so we can nip that in the bud, that, that process should have never happened that way, so we can fix that for sure.
Where the girls club had it.
Yeah, so we can, we can fix that if we were. Yeah, so we can, we can fix that if we work through our schools. So with that said, I want to move us though, because for the sake of time, I want to just move us to how we can get better together. Like, just take a couple suggestions to the middle question around, how can we get better together? Like, what are some things we can potentially do? So I appreciate, Mom, the solutions that you already provided, and her, what are some things we can do to get better together? Skylar, what do you, what do you have?
Well, you can, like, bring it up, like, why it cares.
I, I love that. That, that's awesome. Did everyone hear that? Working together by talking and communicating, working through together, right? Right? So you second that?
Yes, I said, with the school board as well.
Yeah, indeed. Absolutely, working together. I completely, a hundred, ten percent agree. I love that. And teachers as well, she said. Yes.
Would you ever consider having a centralized discipline office?
A centralized discipline, say more, what are you, what are you thinking?
Um, where there's a central office for discipline, and that's where all disciplinary actions come through, so there's more like consistency across the boards between schools on how, who, when, where, why, certain things are handled.
Yeah.
And it's not like, well, this dean does it this way, this dean does it this way, this dean does it this way, and you don't know about it until someone's complaining about it, or whatever.
Right.
But if there's a centralized office for that, then there's a little more.
Especially if you're the high school.
Yep, and so there is. So there's, so any, yeah, so any dean that is obviously disciplining within the school as a director in which they report to, as a principal, and all of those like, you know, severe disciplinary actions that go up, they go always, all to our chief family officer who handles any and all of the expulsion hearings, suspensions, it all goes through that process. So that's the one.
That's what I've done, right?
Um, it depends on the situation, not all, every situation is the same. And I can't really say one versus the other, but when they get to the point in which this district needs to be involved, it goes through the chief family officer. So for example, if a, if a young person is late to class, we don't deal with that per se, but we deal, deal with the more severe incidences. Ms. Washington?
Um, the, the, how can we continue to get better together? I think the very first parent meeting you attended when you came, we talked about living in a schoolhouse, the place to be.
Yeah.
And I think building upon that would be just great, um, more welcoming to the kids, to the community.
Yep, yep.
Um, you know, I, I have an issue with the, with the way we welcome the kids first in the morning.
Yep.
It is the first thing is the uniforms, and we're judging them.
Yep.
You know, we have issues with attendance. I think when we first see our kids in the morning, it would just be great to say, hello, welcome, glad to be today, learn something new, you know, go left in your past, or whatever that is.
Yep, yeah, I completely agree. And through conversations, I think as our kids older, they get less of that, which I don't think is fair, I'm just naming the reality. I think our elementary schools, for example, I know at Garfield, they just do a tremendous job of welcoming their kids and making them excited, and it's really a happy place, I see nods around that, right? So that feeling is happening in elementary, in some pockets in middle, and then we, we obviously, to your point, that's an experience that we're trying to improve at the high school level. So completely, completely agree, yes.
Do you think that that will be a policy that can change, as far as addressing them at the door for drug code, was there a risk in?
Yep, so I know that there are a bunch of things, obviously, we need to address at the high school, and I know that's something that Mr. Garby has on top of mind that he wants to talk through. Of the list of whatever number of things he wants to discuss, I'm sure that'd be addressed in, in some meaningful way. More importantly, I think the bigger picture is how do we make our kids feel more welcomed at school versus feeling judged, right? And I think that actually is not very dissimilar to, Mom over here was talking a little bit earlier about, you know, some situations. So nonetheless, I think that's something that we need to address and speak more candidly about. Yes, and then we're going to move to things we're thankful for after Skylar or Grandma, whoever. Yes.
When a child earns something, okay? And they go down to get what they earned, and it disappears. She's still waiting.
So let's follow, I don't know about that situation personally, but we can follow up, and you have the best person in the, in the room right here to follow up directly, because she can, she can speak to that situation.
They're not causing trouble.
I don't, no you're not. Right, right, right. We're not trying to, we just want to get solutions, we're not trying to cause any trouble either. We just want to make sure that, that, that situation is fixed. So Skylar, I'm going to take your hand, and then we're going to move to the last question.
Um, here it is. Well, well, here's the thing, every, we should have like our teachers and students to like, to like go deeper in their work, instead of like having students like play around and teachers there yelling and making kids do like harder schoolwork where they can keep up on their session.
So what I hear you saying, it's got.
I understand, and her point, okay, I understand that she's getting ready to go into the high.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand it. But all I hear from these teachers is, she's getting ready to go into the high, she needs to learn this right now. She learns differently from other kids, they're all different. Anybody in this room is all different. Nobody learns the same one.
And, and Skylar, you're shaking your head a little bit, are you saying something slightly different maybe? Oh, is that what you meant? What Grandma said? Okay, great, okay. Oh, she's agreeing, got it, okay, okay. So what I, I agree, so I think there's, this goes kind of back to this, how do we help keep kids engaged, which goes back to not judging them, I think, Ms. Washington, was your point there in the back, and make them feel, ooh, a thumbs up, like on Facebook, I like that. So that's what you mean, how do we make sure our kids feel really good? And I, I horribly agree, and that's something that we honestly were thinking about, how do we help provide that professional development for our teachers so that they can make those relationships with kids? So that, Skylar, you feel really good?
I'm getting right back to my second question.
Yeah, which goes back to your subject, absolutely, absolutely. Last question, and probably the most important question of the night, as we move into our Thanksgiving holiday, what are you thankful for? You know, when you think of Lorraine City Schools, what are you thankful for this year, this school year?
I am thankful for having a lot of education.
You were thankful for having a lot of education, I agree, that's good. What else? What else jumps out for you?
Lorraine City Schools under a new management.
Yes.
We appreciate that. What else? Yes?
As a community member, I'm, I'm thankful for the positive ambassadors that are within Lorraine City Schools that kind of put out some of these victories that are happening within our school district. It's wonderful here, they may not always get feedback for it, but it gets out there and it's being heard.
Yeah, that's great. So that goes from school leaders to our wonderful marketing and communications team who does a tremendous job getting out there all the positive news and information, which is great. What else? Anything else?
I just got to my basic education, no, I was.
Right, right.
I said earlier, and I know it may be funny to some people, but I'm actually thankful that most of our academics are not doing what they.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'm definitely thankful for all the.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I didn't raise my hand. Um, just for all the kids that are selling despite what obstacles they have to go to and are go through, and teachers who are supporting them, no matter what they're going through, and it seems like a lot of people are just kind of like keeping their head above water and doing a really great job at it, and I'm very thankful for that.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for sharing.
I am very thankful for, good afternoon, but I am very thankful for the opportunity to be able to make the connection with the parents of the scholars. It's been such an exciting week for me, and I'm making emotional to be able to have went and sat in their living rooms to give them some insight as to what their own child is doing, and what this district is, is, is being able to offer them. If the baby is in trouble, I'm thankful that I'm sitting there, talking to them and that baby, what, not I, but we can do to make sure that baby stay afloat, stay on the right track. And the one thing I have to store, we had just left her home tonight, and she just cannot, she's beyond thankful for the opportunity for somebody to hear her side, and that's what I do, I'm thankful for that.
That's good, that's good, that's good. That goes a lot to Ms. Press and your team's office. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I just wanted to say that, I'm glad when they go low, you go high.
You go high, amen.
Say that.
I'm thankful that my son is so caring, he's a really caring kid, and that he's not, he's not mean as much as he's bullying, because there was a student who, and also it happened to her charger or something for a laptop, and he let her borrow it, but she ended up, she didn't either bring it in, or return it to him, or she lost it or something, I don't know. So, well, we've luckily got a new charger for it.
Good, good. Well, thank you, sir, for being so kind to your classmates, that's very nice of you, very, very nice of you. Ms. Washington?
I'm thankful, um, my daughter has some really great teachers. I like to email and check on her, see how she's doing. She's been ill. I sent them emails last night, probably twelve, eleven o'clock, and then eight, eight o'clock this morning, all of them have replied.
That's awesome.
And every time I, I send an email, they reply right away.
That is awesome.
I'm thankful that they're engaged.
That's great, that is fantastic, that is good. I hope she feels better soon.
Thank you.
With that said, I just want to say a few thank yous before we go. One, I just thank you all for being here tonight, this was just a different style of, of town hall, because we did, we wanted to have intentionally some roundtable conversations, because we're, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're moving into that phase of the year where we need to get better, so we can figure out what we need to do better for all of our kids going into next year. So we really do take seriously the things that you say and the suggestions that you have provided. So I, I deeply thank you on behalf of our team for that. I, I also thank you, thank this wonderful team as well. So the faces that you see that you are, are at your tables or nearby, I'm thankful for their leadership, their belief in our kids, their absolute unrelenting desire to do better for our kids every single day, and do whatever we can to do so. I appreciate everyone there. And I thank everyone that touches a, a young person every single day, whether you're a principal, a teacher, a family member, a community member, a parent, all of you who make our kids' lives important, I appreciate you, and I thank you for all that you do. And lastly, I wish you all just a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, enjoy it with your family, and have some fun with folks, and if you have and want a plate of food, there's plenty here to take with you. So I'm thankful for you taking it with you. So with that said, I wish you a happy Thanksgiving and have a good night.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV 20 WLCS.